Welcome to all through the Thursday, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three meetings of the Beverly Hills Planning Board. Want to go a little bit out of our order on the agenda. Uh, the first item is WS Development. This is a continued public hearing. Uh, they request the continuation to the sixteenth of November. Sixteen would be a one agenda item, ninth, uh, to address WS. Uh, in regards to my standing, path of circulation and, um, looking at the building. So entertain a motion.
Uh, so I can.
I have a motion on the floor. It's made and seconded to move, um, WS Development. Thursday, November sixteen at seven o'clock.
Dennis, hi.
Brian.
Phil.
Phil.
Nick.
That motion passes in there. The next item is a continuing public hearing for Bunker Brook Inclusionary Housing Townhouse dwelling.
So how it was left at the last meeting, um, the board had requested some information in regards to the differences between the market rate units and the affordable units. And then we do have, you know, the plan that was provided in regards to, um, where those would be. And, um, that's provided to the board.
Then on the floor is yours.
Um, I, I just, you know, this. I'm a little confused, but maybe you could just set me straight right now that I was under the impression that, you know, I did work with the housing. Beverly Hills Housing Authority and that, you know, they were very enthusiastic and worked multiple ways, but I have drawings over there that I could show if we wanted to look at, but I don't know whether we whether we're gonna do that or not. It was. And they had a site. I don't, I don't want to repeat everything. They have a good site that I thought was appropriate, but it seems like, um, that, uh, everyone's not in favor of that site. So, um, I did want to build something offsite. I, I, e- even if I don't work on that site, I do have, you know, I do have good floor plans and elevations that I think really would fit well for affordable housing. I think it's smart, affordable housing, rather than when we built inside our development, we're building luxury affordable housing. Let's face it, you know, their two car garages, they have control ceilings, they're all all the dude has it. Even if we scale them down, they're still really nice. They're still, it's, it's, it's really nice. And it's, it's, it's probably more than twice as big as the, as what we're required to provide for affordable housing. Those units are about twice the size. So in any event, um, I did work on a product, uh, a- a- at a, for a some proposals and I was under this, I was under the impression that if I saw certain obstacles that, that this was still a go and now it it seems, um, the people the people from the housing authority seems to think that, um, that this not, this is not gonna go forward. Um, uh, I, I was I was informed that if I, because of time, that if I started with the that I needed to get this in, uh, because your decision requires me to have the affordable housing before the first occupancy permit. So that puts, you know, the gun on me to get this thing done, uh, even though it's a hundred units. There's a lot, there's there's probably two or three years before I sell out at, at, at the earliest, but in any way. From my perspective, it's plenty of time, but I know that different towns have gotten burnt before because they said they were gonna do it and they didn't do it or and it came to the end. So, you know, I'm not that guy, but in any event. I still think it's a smarter deal to offsite. Um, I could look at other sites. I did talk to some people. They said there's, that the governor is just proposing four billion dollars for affordable housing over the next five years. So there's opportunities for state grants. So see, uh, a- a- and I'm and, and if that was the case, I'd build more than eleven units, you know, it'd be a real win for the town or for the housing authority or whatever. I really would like to work with it. I really like to do something offsite, but if, if, if it's too late and if I can't do it. You know, my partner here is, uh, telling me over and over, Steve, you can't do it. It won't work. And I keep trying. I keep coming back yet. Cause you guys have been very fair to work with. I, I have to say, you've been very fair. I, I work a lot of different towns. But in any event, you tell me, is this, am I? Am I, I don't know what to put towards, you know, chasing something that's not gonna happen and I'm, I don't wanna waste your time. I don't want you to waste my time, but if there's a chance I can do it, I'd love to do it. But if I can't do it, then, then we'll move on or we'll put it inside the development.
At our last meeting, we had a rather lively and robust discussion about this. Um, we were put in a situation.
I'm sorry.
It was perceived that we were not in favor of doing this project.
Okay.
We simply need to that we've had many discussions with you. And you've been here probably two or three times.
Yeah.
And we have told you that, hey, at this point it cannot work.
Okay.
We are not aware of clerk titled to Lillane. The former town planner has mentioned that too. A motion was also made at the last meeting to move forward with onsite, uh, inclusionary housing.
Okay.
And that was, um, made and approved as in the minutes.
Okay.
We wanted to encourage you down the road to look at options.
Okay.
But at this point, it, it, it's not viable. One of the concerns we had at the last meeting was, uh, this was raised by your partner that you have a lot of, um, sales.
Yep.
That we did not want to jeopardize.
Right.
And so that's why we reached that decision at our last meeting. It's not that we don't like the idea. It's just that at this point in time, the timing's not viable. And, uh, you know, you're coming in again this evening. You came in two meetings ago.
Yeah.
We, we don't have the time. And your partner agrees, we don't have the time to flush this out, to meet your requirements.
Yeah.
But tonight we just really to be talking about, uh, you guys request us to bring in some, uh, show you some finishes, what we're doing on the inside of the units. And, uh, we provide that to Amy and, uh, you guys probably have a copy and we'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
It's a little more robust list than we had last week on a piece of paper. Um, now if I'm not mistaken, when we're talking about inclusionary housing, um, it's meant as inclusionary. It gives the opportunity for, uh, seven residents of Beverly Hills.
In the lotteries, in the lot, then are the preferred for mobile.
Requirements. To purchase homes that are considered affordable.
Yes.
In perpetuity. And that, that does not change. Uh, it is not, um, the intent of affordable housing. Uh, I'm sorry, in- inclusionary housing. To address what, uh, is evident in town of a need for, um, quote unquote, affordable house. This is inclusionary housing. It's below market value and the intent is to give people the opportunity to buy homes where they live. Probably seven of those people, if they qualify, could be Beverly Hills residents. And the other four could be outside.
Correct.
And that meets a, um, criteria that was dated on September thirteenth. Um, signed by Mel- Michael Connor. And I believe you must have been aware of this. Um, that was submitted to the state.
But that's, that's all, I mean, that's all about the, that's the way the state is.
Oh, Michael Connor, no, no. Michael Connor's a selectman in Beverly Hills.
Oh, okay.
Excuse me.
All right.
But now I think our discussion last time was left with the location of these, um, units. In talking to, uh, Jim Cutler, our consultant and former town planner. Um, this is a special permit, so we're up to, up to discussion on where we want to put these affordable units. Right now it appears that they are in the middle of your triplexes.
Correct.
Yeah. And there is an interpretation from the state. And you have that available?
Yeah, it's a town, it's the town.
It's the towns.
It's the towns.
So. You wanna read that?
Yeah. Section two forty dash one seventy-nine provisions applicable to affordable housing units for offsite, on or offsite. And under A, sitting of affordable units. All affordable units constructed or rehabilitated under this bylaw shall be con- uh, constitute so as not to be in less desirable locations than market rate units in the development and shall, on average, be no less accessible to public amenities such as open space comma as the market rate units. So one of the concerns I had was that, you know, the, the phrase not to be in a less desirable location. And if I was thinking of someone coming into your lot, into your development, looking to purchase, I think a good many of them would say, hey, do I want to have one wall or two walls with neighbors on it? And I think the average person would say that, geez, maybe one wall versus two walls would be better. So to me, the and I'm gonna say, person that would be like me would basically come in and say, well, you know, what, what? What's the difference? Well, one's got one wall with a neighbor and the other one's got two walls in a neighbor. And the one you're, you're proposing, every one of them has two walls, which I would say would be less desirable in my opinion. I don't know what the breadth of the board feels, but to me that feels like, you know, a less desirable position in general.
It's, it's got less windows, but it's also more affordable to maintain.
Yeah, the condo fee on those units, less expensive than the condo fee on any other units as well.
It's cheaper to heat and cheaper to cool.
Yes.
So. So the condo fees are actually, you're distinguishing between those units as well with the condo fees. So you're, you're distinguishing between.
But it's not only that unit. Some, it's different fees for the each, like it's square footage wise. Okay, so we have units of eighteen hundred, we have units of fifteen hundred. So those also get distinguished with a different fee. Some of their floor was gonna have eighteen hundreds, some of their floor is gonna have fifteen hundred.
Square feet.
Square feet.
So like the style D.
Yes.
Well, I think the minimum's nine hundred square feet.
So style B is eighteen hundred, where style B is the five fifteen.
Any plus and minus.
So it looks like the Ds, the ones that are on Ds as noted on your plan, that was submitted, um, to the state. It looks like those two are at the eighteen sixty-nine per square footage. Actually, there's one, two, three, and then it looks like the other one, two, three, four, five, six. So it looks like there's five and then six. Five being at the, um, fifteen sixty-three square foot and then the other ones are at eighteen. So it looks like they did half in half of that.
Yeah.
Um, but you're actually correct, Phil, that they're in the middle. Yeah.
And also the, the difference is that we didn't put it all on one kind of poster. We kind of spread it out to the project. I feel that is a if you look at that, it's a
Oh, it should be, in my personal opinion, my interpretation, my reading of that, and the board may feel otherwise, my, it should be spread out.
Yeah. And they agree.
Are you thinking more than what's here, Phil?
Yeah, I'm agreeing that some of the, some of the ones should be on the end in my.
Okay, I just throw it out for discussion purpose.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the overall scope of what you do. And I realize this is a former golf course. And some of the lots in the back, excuse me, are obviously much larger than some of the interior lots. But if you look at the, um, the, the five surrounding the center of the development, those are probably three of the most dense lots that you have. Is that a fair assessment?
That's gonna be one of the nicest center that you, that, that
That's, those are premiums.
First of all, behind of the units, we only have about twenty to twenty-five feet that it's gonna be usable, like
Okay.
Grass.
Thank you.
This whole center island, all it's gonna be a really nice metal center with some seating area and all those, uh, little, little white sections, there was gonna be like walking paths. Like that people can walk around and, and it's gonna be the nicest spot in that development when this is all complete.
Okay. Are you eligible to move any, any of these?
You guys will watch and tell us.
No, no, we don't know.
I, I just feel like the, the, this, it's affordable housing.
Yeah.
So.
Well, again, it's inclusionary.
It includes, yeah, but the, the, the middle unit, whoever is gonna be in there is, it's the, all the cost to maintain that unit, it's gonna be less than the cost to maintain units outside as well. So we did, we ju- we did a project in town, um, five years ago, and we did the same kind of style building, triplexes, and we had a four affordability. It was four affordability. We did a some thing.
Fine. I was on the board at that point.
Yeah.
We did the same project.
We did a project in that way. We did the same.
That we backed up against the common area and we, we did that corner here so beautiful that, uh, it was a it was a premium.
Dennis.
I have a question. I don't have something to reference here. Sorry about that. The back of all the middle units, what's the structure in the back of that? We're in the front of it, but the driveways are. What is that little structure in the front? All the middle ones have it. Um.
I, I have that too. Yeah, I have it here. Uh, it's just the porches where you go into your front door. Let me see what, let me see what.
Drive section.
These here on all these units, you know, the structure right here, Steven, in the middle units of every unit you got.
Oh, those are just porches.
Oh, these are porches. Now, do they belong to the middle unit?
Yeah, every, every unit had a little fortress with a porch.
Oh, so these, you go in there and you go to either the metal or the two side. I see. Okay.
Just so we don't have like a straight wall.
All right.
Just draw it like a, this is architectural design.
So, uh, thank you for providing the information that we requested. I, I noticed that you referenced an affordable appliance package, but there was no affordable appliance, uh, material provided. Can you tell me what that is?
Uh, it says, uh, stove, uh, microwave and a refrigerator. And I think she has a list in there.
Dishwasher, totally.
And a dishwasher.
Dishwasher's not included.
Dishwasher, dishwasher is not included?
On the affordable now.
Okay.
But it is in the market rate.
Yes. And the refrigerator is not included on, um, on the
Market, but it's included.
It's included on a, on a porch. Yes.
Right, so then what's an affordable appliance?
It's just the, the way they, they require you to do.
Okay.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. I'm sorry?
So what is a, an affordable appliance package? Versus a standard appliance package?
But you, on that list you have, so you can see what is it, what is it, what is it on one side and what is the other?
One side says standard appliance package for market rate. The other side says affordable appliance package. I don't know what either mean.
No, affordable unit and market rate unit at the top.
Yes, but, but, um,
What applies is smaller than that.
One says affordable appliance package.
Yeah, but like, but if you, if you look at, if you keep looking down affordable, uh, uh, appliance package, it's a refrigerator included, dishwasher not included. Yeah.
Okay, you just crushed.
Yeah, it's just, the other side is the thing.
Yeah.
Refrigerator not included, dishwasher's included.
Okay. I, uh, also know, Phil, Phil said that the B units are smaller.
Mm-hmm.
They don't have a lock. The other units do have a lock. And
They really don't have a lock. It's like, uh, the bedrooms on those units on the second floor.
Yeah.
And those, uh, uh, B units, the, it's a one-floor leaving.
Right.
It's all the, uh, the two bedrooms on the fourth floor, the family room. It's a, a one and a half beds as well.
And the Bs, Bs don't have locks. Bs have locks.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And then I also noticed that there's no dishwasher, no fireplace, no kitchen island, and also no air conditioning and no recessed lighting. The air conditioning, I don't think is, um, that you can distinguish, I mean, strictly speaking, you can, you can distinguish that from the outside. You don't see a unit. The air conditioning has to stay. That's that's
It's not, it's not required.
Well, we're talking about what, um, what we think is reasonable under our bylaw. Uh, that that is something that you can visibly say, that's an affordable unit. There's no air conditioning.
But you can see that the air condition, you, you can see from the front.
We don't have a front.
It's only in the back.
This is a, this is in a gigantic circle, right? So people can see all these things?
No.
No?
No.
Uh, I must be looking at this different circle. Um, I think there's too many, there's too many differences between the affordables and the interior versus the market rate, particularly with the air conditioning. I think that the location, putting them all in the middle is not compliant with what we would normally do or see or approve. So I'd like to see at least three to five of them to be moved somewhere else, not outside of the middle. And, uh, for the record, it's maddening that you come back to us tonight and again, sing this Piper song of, oh, I only wish I could do this project. I only wish you could do the project too. I would be all in favor of that. We've heard about this project for a year, if not longer. The reason we're doing onsite or you're doing, or you elected to do, or you're forcing to do onsite constructions is because of your inability to present us with anything else that's viable. So do not put this on us. We would have loved to have this other senior housing or whatever it was gonna be. I don't even know what it was gonna be, because it's never been presented to us.
Understood.
Brian, are you, are you thinking then, if you look at, let's just say, for example, forty-seven D, are you thinking of maybe moving hypothetically that one to, let's say, that sawgrass circle at number two? So it meets Phil's thought of not having it at the middle, maybe having an end unit and getting it out of there. So doing that with three of them, three of the eleven, is that what your thought is?
I would like to see some of, and, and I really
Like outside of this circle, are you thinking like, uh, maybe one in Sawgrass and one in double circle?
Right, and maybe a mix of if I don't want them all to be in the level.
So could we maybe pin that down, what the board thinks? Cause I'd really like to nail this down tonight with the applicant to see if, if we can find out if we're gonna move, what are we thinking, three? Is that what everybody's okay with?
How many, how many total?
We need eleven total.
How many total units in this?
One oh eight.
One oh eight. Okay, so that's a lot. Sorry.
Yes, so we need eleven.
I'm, I, I like to know what they're willing to do.
I, I
Before we put a number.
Okay.
I, I think three's, I'll say three's too low for me. I mean, this is, doesn't have to be fifty percent to me, but sorry, Bill, but
I'm wondering, we talked about, uh, three to five. Without holding up your, your sails, I notice we don't have anything on cypress or pebble or sawgrass or seminal. Um, is there any room to work with us on that? And we're trying to work with you.
And is there a compromise with when we looked at Brian's air conditioning? So maybe, like, there's gotta be some compromise, I think, on both sides of what we can do to achieve this, cause we're there, we're close.
Here's, here's my ceiling. I am not opposed. And I, I think we need to change the verbiage. The market rate unit and the inclusionary housing unit, I would replace affordable inclusionary. Just so they're on the same page. I do not have a problem taking these things out because they're significantly less than market value. And as you indicated at the last meeting, they will find a way. Um, they'd rather have the air conditioning than have a kitchen island. And they were, they would find a way that they pay that money. And over time, they get slight return on that. What, when they move out of that unit, they get some on their minimal amount of their investment bank.
Well, they
But you may say, usually it's a they do end up paying for it.
They get typically enough affordable, they typically pay fifty thousand in upgrades.
Okay.
It, it, that, that's one of the other reason with the, with the cost of construction today. And putting those, you know, those units, outside units is a lot more expensive to build than interior, um, units as well.
Yeah, I, and, and I know that, that's not a concern of what I cost.
Yeah.
I cost them double. The include, the affordability moved up about ten percent.
I'm not, I'm not even, I'm not enjoying that. That, you know, it's so bad.
That's a fact.
Can I ask what the difference in cost is between these two columns?
Uh, it's, uh,
Ten thousand dollars.
It's not that much.
Between ten and fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, not that much.
Not that much is the
Yeah. We lost, we, we lost, we lost probably two to three hundred thousand in those units easily each. That's our loss.
On what?
On the, on the sale, the affordable.
On, on the inclusionary, which is required.
Yeah, yeah, it is. Yeah, we understand.
Again, I'm gonna go back to what they articulated was that people come up, um, they find the money for the air conditioner. I would suspect mo- most times when they on inclusionary, pick something up and pay above, it's usually the air conditioner, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We just, we just did, yeah, we just did, uh, sixty-six units and we had ten, at least ten affordability.
Yeah.
And, uh, every single one paid for pretty much for, to do a AC unit.
Okay. Okay, that brings me to a question that maybe I, I, I should have asked to begin with. How many of your inclusionary units are already built?
One.
Okay. Okay, I might just
The, the, the number sixteen.
Okay. That's a big unit.
And we, yeah, we're thinking about doing another one that has the floor as well soon.
I say something, I agree with all of you guys are thinking, but owning one of these now in a center unit, so it's a third cheap at the heat and air conditioning. Two people on the end want us to swap units. They, cause they can afford theirs, cause it costs so much more and their condo fees are so much up there. Just for living there. We wouldn't change ours for all the money to plan. We, we, they can buy it from us. Don't want to have an air cancer. It's the backyard, it's all glass, it's gorgeous. Front yard's all glass, it's gorgeous. I don't need to look at the outside. And you pay a third more in utilities. And you're gonna pay at least that in condo fees. And that's huge money, if you're in, especially if you're in affordable unit. Their income is actually gonna benefit from it. That's just my argument, and I own a center unit. I wouldn't get rid of it.
When you're covering walls, I mean, we, we do apartments.
Yeah, never hear.
In apartment.
Yeah, there's like sound heating bill in January is like thirty dollars a month. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, I agree a hundred percent. We know, cause they're always complaining to us.
Yeah.
We wish we bought that center unit. Just from first of all, penny, cause I, like I said, I lived in one. And I've lived there for a year. And I hear them all talking all the time. And they all, they all want to send the unit to tell you, Joe, and they're the rich people. Why not?
I, I'm not too terribly concerned with where these go. I think we have standard language in our agreement of they didn't win, all of that stuff can go in. I don't want them to be all middle units, um, for the reasons I articulate. I do think air conditioning is not something I have.
Yeah, the air conditioning, I would say, that should be too.
I agree that.
Yeah, that would be. Yeah, the air conditioning, I would say, that should be too, I agree that, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, I heard, I heard everybody was coughing up money for the air conditioning, so it sounds like that's. And that sounds like whether it's the upfront cost or the secondary cost.
Usually they have, they have the air conditioning, they have hardwood floor, and they have granite countertops, they have all those.
And so, and one of you already even finished, finished the basics.
We have one for a hundred thousand extras.
So that just, so that argument is that those are sta- standard amenities.
The argument is those people have money.
It's not really standard.
Standard, wha- what you're saying is that the air conditionings and the granite countertops are standard amenities for the people, whether they're the inclusionary or the non-inclusionary.
Keep in mind though, granite isn't, granite to have an affordable, that's not an amenity.
Okay, I don't have granite countertops in my house.
Keep in mind they're affordable.
I'll say that, but. It's it, but that's what you're, you're arguing that, and it doesn't sound, it it.
AC, ACs to me, some without.
I I look at it a different man. That if um it does, if they don't include it. They're gonna strip and save. Put it in the house. I don't think. The intent. Of inclusionary and affordable housing. Is provide people with air conditioning. It's to lower the value of the house. To put them in a town where they work, so they can afford it. That's the purpose of what we wanted to do. I'm more concerned in having a discussion. On. Getting some of the units off the middle if possible. The contents I'm not so concerned about. If they need to go out and borrow, you know, borrow from family. Because um, you know, I I I don't know. I also know we're not that. There is thin threshold.
There are.
That people have to meet.
Yes.
Based on income.
Yes.
That's tough.
Yes.
And they're tough.
Yes.
And the more amenity you put then, the more they're gonna cost, the less people call it.
That's right.
Correct.
That's right.
And that increases the cost of the building.
Exactly.
And makes it um, less attractive. The inclusionary housing.
Right.
And it skews the ratio.
Yep.
Of what the state's gonna look at.
Yeah. Try applying. Let me know how you work out.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, well, that's what, this application is what has been already submitted with, but I do agree with what the the board is saying in regards to, if you wanna move some of these, a few of these. That we could go back and put this application in with a few of those changes and see what this take, but there are thresholds that we have to meet, well, they have to meet.
Not changing the outside structure whatsoever, they're all gonna look exactly like everybody else.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, I think you guys have come. In front of the board with a lot of good intentions. I think it's very reasonable that the board has this discussion. It's good intention, I'm saying you guys can often be business decisions rather than good intentions. I think it's a good thing that we're looking at it. Something that does worry me. It can happen, although the exteriors won't look different. Could end up being a stigma that if you live in the middle unit. You're somebody that has an affordable unit, so I would be in favor of putting a few on the corners just to eliminate. Any discussion there. I don't wanna put our residents in in that position where people are making assumptions or talking about them that they live in the middle unit, they could be. Affordable, which is not true, but we know.
We we've done it, we've done it in the past, and it hasn't happened, and we've, to date, we've actually. We'll never go into head discussion about the interior units, I don't recall ever doing that.
Yeah, this is the first time we talked about, or not, Rajan said we've done, we got.
To do it.
Yeah, yeah.
They don't say that down like like.
Could we identify those maybe to move on the outside, it seems like everybody's in agreement to put a few on the outside or to or no?
Well, sixty six percent of these. Are on the outside. So I don't think, I mean, I would, as one person on this, I wouldn't have to go to sixty six, but I, you know. Fifty percent, drop in fifty percent of these on the outside, or something like it from my seat. Makes more sense. That's, yeah, the five out of six, that, yeah.
Five and a half.
Five and a half, five, five.
I I could.
Something like that.
Let's let's see what they're removing.
I.
Honestly, it's a little, it's a little bit economically punitive at our end. But, you know, and and we haven't had that.
And it's not only that, whoever's going in there, their expense is gonna be more. So that's the point as well on this.
He's not cheating on the square footage here, but you're giving them both square footage outside, you know, I'm saying so.
Yeah, which is valuing different things.
You get me, yeah, well.
But you wanna think about the person who's gonna move there as well, that it's gonna be, be spending more money. Also to pay energy more, heating. Electrician, all all that, they gonna be, that 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 the um. They're not as affordable anymore, so.
This is luxury housing, this is fully sprinkled, this is, this is all the bells and whistles, this whole development. It's got, the landscaping is drop dead gorgeous coming in, it's a beautiful place to live. Everyone's gonna benefit from living in a beautiful place.
I think, I think personally, three is reasonable.
Mm-hmm.
For the, they are taking a haircut on all of these units. That there is a premium for, you know, nobody wants to live in the middle, some people do, maybe, um but uh. Three, I think is reasonable. I, if the board has a preference of where they should go, I I don't. Um. But I think three, and there has to be air conditioning on it. That is something you can see from the outside, that is, that is. Wildly reasonable in my opinion.
Are there smaller end units that would offset the cost of heating and cooling?
Uh no, because uh. The outside, some of the units, it's bigger than, we don't have the fifteen hundred square feet units on the outside, we only have them on the on the inside.
What's your smallest outside unit?
Uh the smallest uh twenty twenty one. And I think we have eighteen. And twenty two.
I'm also that clearly a premium, and that's, and that's why, let's face it, that's why we wanted to put them in the middle, because our premium units on the outside.
So why don't you just, pick three where you wanted to go, that's not in the middle, you tell us where you want it to go.
Okay. What about we, can we stick with the two? Yeah, I mean, we'll send up the eleven.
We started going from three to five. Um and I was going to four, I I would be happy with three.
This is a special permit?
Yes, it is.
And then the problem is.
I might be an outlier on this, not to say that, um I I think half is. Reasonable, and I think we all value things differently on this board, and that's why we're all on this board separately. But I think, uh to me. I value it a little differently than other members of the board do.
And it doesn't have to be unanimous, it it doesn't, and that's the beauty of a special permit, and we, that that's okay. With, we can't come to an agreement, it's okay.
So.
It's, yeah.
Yep.
I I think we're perfect ways from what affordable housing is.
It's it's an inclusionary housing.
It's an inclusionary, it's beneath the inclusion. It's inclusionary, affordable housing is entirely typical.
Okay.
And we we were painted last week. As being anti-affordable housing. And once you're painting with that brush, it's very difficult to get rid of it. We were not anti-affordable housing. I I know Brian articulated. This is inclusionary housing, it is different. We are not ignorant of the need in town. For um housing for people. People who are homeless. People with medical needs. Uh people with disabilities, we're not ignorant to that. It's just that this came, and we've advised you. Over at least three different meetings. That we needed a plan that was viable and doable. And when you presented it last week, it was time. It was a great thought, but again, we were painted with the brush. That we're anti-affordable housing. And that couldn't be further from the truth in this.
I have something, I have minutes even, um. This timeline is your, is the applicant's timeline, it's not our timeline. Um we are going this path and not doing the project that you came in talking again tonight about, because you need to have. You're selling these properties, so for the record, this is your timeline, not our time. And I agree with Brian, this is, this is, uh and it is what it is. But we came in months and months and months ago with the same concept that several board members, including myself, loved. We love the concept of of doing something, we had some questions about, well geez, how does that go with, you know, with the state counts and things like that, you know, and and how do we get? You know, the state to say yes, that goes toward their, you know, forty B count, and you know, inclusionary housing, we had all those questions, that was months ago. So, you know, for the record, this is your timeline, not our timeline, I mean, I have no problem giving you a continuance for three months out, we can come back and talk about it again. Um you're you're, you've got a timeline that you expressed, you got thirty units, you gotta sell by the end of the year. That's your timeline, sir, that's, and I don't think you disagree with it, right?
I only have thirty units to sell.
How many?
Twelve.
Twelve, I mean, yeah, and you needed seven by this end, right, okay, apologize if my memory wasn't perfect.
We're bumped on the number, but anyway, this is the schedule, so. We're also in your room.
Okay.
That's not your fault, it's just happened.
You know, and another thing that's happened unfortunately. We've intertwined affordable inclusion.
Yes.
And they're different.
Yes.
Inclusionary is meant to give people working in this town. Police officers, firemen, teachers. The opportunity to buy a home where they live. Affordable housing, forty B, subsidized housing are different entities. That is separate. From what you're doing then. We have had in the past the opportunity. Take individual units. That are um. Put them back in the cash rules. That are abandoned properties. And call that quote unquote, inclusionary or affordable. But again, I'm going back. And I I think we all felt this way. That we were painted with a uh a brush. That we're anti-affordable, that couldn't be further from the. This is inclusionary housing. It it it's a different vehicle, it's set up by the state. Uh I'm not in agreement with the, all the ways it's done. But you know, that's, that's not my battle right now. I think some of the way they do the calculations are a little antiquated. I've expressed that publicly before. Um so the thing we need to do tonight is. Try to find a. Location. Where we can um use a term someone used. Um. Find three um units. Where we can um. Give you a haircut without giving you a whistle. So to speak.
You wanna move the one from sea grass from the middle to the number one?
That'd be, that'd be minimal. Keep going.
Which one is that, I'm sorry?
The one.
On sea grass?
Number one.
Moving up from three to one.
Yeah.
The one from number forty seven. We put a number two on, I know you guys wanna want more on the cul-de-sac.
We're we're open to any, we're open.
New location? Or we can move that forty seven to either forty nine or forty five?
Fine.
What do you guys think, where would be, where do you think?
Um.
What do you?
I heard outside the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, but I I I'm, I'm fine, you know. I could do forty nine.
Brian, are you with this?
Yeah, yeah, either one is fine.
What would you think?
Outside is good.
Okay.
Can we get one more outside?
And then we do the D. Um. If the either the the. Twenty eight or the forty four, you're moving outside? Either the twenty six or the thirty?
I'm saying, which one?
The twenty eight to the twenty six?
Does that, does that work for everybody? Val, does that work in there?
Uh yeah, let's talk about air air conditioning. I heard that it's basically standard amended. I I know you don't think it is, but people are paying for it separately.
But I think it's a debt on the state when you look at, that's what is. That's, we not doing this because we wanna do it, this is the way it's in there. With the um. They wanna the outside to be the same.
What the difference is to be inside?
The inside. Yes. So we're not picking this like just what we wanna do. This has been like this since I've been building. But.
I I I don't, just to cut to the chase, I I think air conditioning is a reasonable thing to include. If you can see it from the outside. It distinguishes affordable unit from any other units, I think. There needs to be air conditioning, from my point of view.
Yeah, um. I don't know, I lived without air conditioning my whole life, now I gotta die for it, so. That's cause we're old, you know, that's that's.
I'm I'm gonna go back to, I think, the intent of inclusionary housing. Was. To make it affordable. I think in some ways, but. Give people in this town the opportunity to own a home. If it comes with air conditioning, that's fine. If they wanna borrow or shrimp and save. Import air conditioning, I think that's fine. But I think what happens. Once you start adding amenities. To the inclusionary housing. It increases the value of that unit. And then it throws off the calculations for the state. And the state is pretty specific. What their calculations, and we have a hard time meeting them sometimes as what, you know, right now.
Whatever the company's standards are, should be what he gets goes by to begin with, correct? I don't know how much you have to deal with now.
You, how much of the ten to fifteen thousand dollar difference between the two islands that we mentioned earlier is, let's see. The ballpark.
So I read grant easy.
Half of it?
Not half of it, but. Five grand, somewhere around that.
It's cheap, right?
Five grants, cheap money, right?
I want ten to do nine of us, where's your, what you give me a hundred?
Yeah, hold on, let's just get skewed on that.
So the total value, the total value of the inclusionary houses is gonna be how much?
Two hundred and thirty two, I think.
That's eighty percent of the top, eighty, what?
Eighty.
Eighty percent of the total market value of the the, on average one?
No, it's calculated, it's nothing to do with that, income, it's based on income and your in town.
And what's the non? Give me the two numbers, the inclusionary house.
Thirty two.
Two thirty, two thirty two, six hundred?
The the six hundred, that's what we started.
Yeah.
And the difference between the appliance is fifteen to fifteen?
Yeah, so the appliances, just the appliances, they don't have. We don't supply the um. The refrigerator, and the refrigerator comes with the affordable. With the inclusionary.
Most expensive appliances.
Appliances and the kitchen.
I I I think. I know I have some people that are.
I want a refrigerator for my AC.
You you're getting a heck of a deal.
You know, yeah.
On the inclusionary house. Based on what the market value is. Now. Let me just um. We break down this, I apologize. What's your building schedule? Inside the circle?
Um.
How far away is that?
Oh, in, in here, we we don't have any building yet, the 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 first building that's up is the um. The first six buildings going down Palmero, so you have. One, two, three, four, five, six building, those those are the ones that's the first one up.
Okay.
And then we're thinking about going right.
Fine.
And then if we have two more, and then like, you know, like on our last, next five buildings that we're thinking there, put it out.
Okay.
And also we think in sea grass here, that we might be um. Doing those buildings as well, that's what we're thinking.
All right.
Next. Next.
I'm, I'm not a math major, my, my wife's natural, so I'm definitely not a math major. More quickly here for a minute. I know we've gotten down to three, um, different end units. I know we've put locations on. I assume. That this is, as you said, a two or three year building.
Yes.
And the market value in Beverlyhand is anticipated, continued to go up to some degree.
Yes.
Maybe not as much as the past two years, but continue to go up. And we talked about the haircut. What if we were to? Put some of the inclusionary housing. Close to where you're starting. So the haircut's not as bad now, as opposed to where you're gonna be finishing with a haircut, haircut could be more. You follow me?
I do, but, but.
But I think, I think.
The other side of it is, every project, whether us or anyone else, upfront costs dramatically, I mean, we, we just spent a lot of money. So we're looking to get cash flow like every other development.
I understand.
Cash flow in the beginning, at the end of the project. You know, we, we have, we carry a little debt, you know, and right now we have a lot of debt, we got high interest rate. A lot of things going against the gap. Not just ourselves. Appreciate the judgment, but really spreading them out.
Do you know what I was trying to do?
Everyone, I appreciate that.
Appreciate that.
But really, okay. We could use the cash flow more than.
Okay.
More than the savings. All right, point of order, you have the vote.
I'm making a motion. Well, what is your motion?
Make a motion that we go with what we discussed. Given the three.
With the change.
For the changes.
Three units.
For the three units. I would say, air conditioning is optional. That's your, that's your motion, yeah.
Okay.
I'm moving up until the air conditioning.
Um. Do I, do I, do I have a second? So we have a discussion?
Well, I'll move to, to approve this with the three units rearranged as we discussed. Subject to our usual phasing that we usually do. Um, what, or let me back up, draft a favorable decision. Um, that has the rearranged units as we discussed. With the typical phasing that we usually incorporate into our decision. With the proviso that from the, the affordable units must include air conditioning.
So, wait, we, before, wait a minute, but that's what I need to clarify, cause yours wasn't seconded, so.
Right, he has to remove it.
Yes.
And I'll second.
Brian.
Brian.
Good. Discussion. Does that have to be unanimous? I, I'm, I have mixed emotions. I, I think by adding the air conditioning, for increase the value of the inclusionary housing unit. Which this was presented to the state without air conditioning.
Yes.
And that could change the mathematics here.
We also, we also moved three units that had considerable.
Those we have to go back, well, you'll probably have to put that back, those other.
Yeah, there won't be a problem for that, because that's just, yeah.
This, the air conditioning changer, the bad calculations, the math of the state.
That's, that's the way written on the state, what we, what we supply, yes. What we supply with the affordable side, that's what is written in the state.
They're, they're meeting the state's requirements, inclusionary.
I think they have every right to do that.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's why I'm opposed to adding the air conditioning.
That's why.
They met the requirements of the states.
What I said, it was my proposal, optional. So.
Yeah, I, you know, and I don't wanna belabor their point, but it's, it's a subjective analysis of are these. Fundamentally different, and whether or not they've satisfied some state requirement that we don't know about, I think is. Is, it's not fair to say, I think it's, it's always been a discussion with us, but. We, we understand that it has to be different, and, and, and there's a lot of difference, there, there, all of the amenities are really stripped. From, from this, except for, we're just adding back in the air conditioning. Imagine the air conditioning, the, the duck is gonna be. Put in anyways, but it's, there's a lot of things that this affordable unit doesn't have, and I don't know why we're talking about. Air conditioning too much, when we just moved three units from the middle to the ends. And that was a significant impact to the applicant, so.
To, to your point, does the AC all at once? It is cheaper for him to do it than it is for them to do it later. That is true. If they're there, they're doing them all, you tie them all, you get them all done, to do them afterwards, I bet that price is more like ten or eleven grand.
The fact is, everyone in the portable people add. Money into the equation.
Oh, I imagine they upgrade the heck out of it, for sure.
Because they still get it.
Yeah, exactly.
We all call for a vote. We all vote on air conditioning, so.
Okay, let's see, so, we got our motion, we got it seconded. So we're voting to have the, the motion is to, to move those three units. Along with adding air conditioning. To all of the eleven units.
Drafts a favorable decision.
Yeah, the draft.
And then to strike from the affordable unit, the no air conditioning provision. And, and, and this is just to draft a favorable decision. Um, so we'll talk about it next time, if we have.
Yeah, I'm gonna go with, consider we act, we can come back to this. After the decision's drafted, and we'll have another discussion on it. Um, so.
No, you know, hold, hold on. We really need to put this to bedroom, so you can. Throw itself.
Yes, but I thought you guys would be seven units out of that. Four, already.
Right, we did, right.
Yes.
Yes.
Were we still in discussion? Oh, hold on, it's been a call for the votes. Just get it over with. Rip the band-aid off.
Let the band-aid off, I'm in a row.
What?
Dennis Mel. Ryan.
Bill no.
Bill I.
Nick I. So it needs four out of. So it fails, so we need to come up with something. A different motion or?
Deny it.
No, we need to come to a call.
Can we vote on the units, like moving those three, can we bring it up into separate motions?
Let's do that.
How about that?
I need to make a motion with three units.
What is that, what does that get us?
It gets us your first goal, which was to get some of those outside of the center. Take that motion, deal with that, and then we can also. Discuss the other one more, or we could have a, you know, we could have them do research, I don't, I don't know, you could have research on what this would cost and bring it back with a draft decision. There's other ways we can do, but at least we know we're gonna move those out that you guys wanted out of the center.
Well, so it's, it's up to.
Um, okay. I, I would indicate, um. Okay. Follow me here. Be a long turn here. We don't have to. And we could be setting a precedent, and I realize that. You need to have a decision. So that you can start to sell. Your buildings.
Yes.
Is it possible to do something in a motion? That says, as of this evening. We have decided on the three locations. To move the inclusionary housing off of the middle units. And that currently. The units that will be for sale. The single enclosure area housing. Would have air conditioning. And then we can look at the others down with it.
Look, exactly, we can do it in this phase and then come back to it, and then moves on, no.
I don't think we can, I just proceed.
And I don't know if we need it as a whole project package.
Yeah, so I was gonna say.
Yeah.
Would you consider moving one of those end units to the middle, and we're just saying we'll include the air conditioning? Consider that? One more time, would you consider moving one of those three swapping you, from the end to the middle? And then we'll just include air conditioning in all of them.
Now, that's, so that's like going.
No.
Thousand for two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
This is. So for me, it's not about the ACs, it is about. The exteriors are going to look different. If you have a trained eye, you're going to be able to walk into this neighborhood. And point out which ones are inclusionary housing. There's nothing wrong with purchasing inclusionary housing, but nobody that purchases them deserves. People singling them out for whatever reason. For me, it's not about the humidity, it is about the residents in that neighborhood do not deserve to be singled out. But that is why.
And just going down the line, for me. I was willing to bend to the three because we were adding EC. So, but that's where I, one person stands.
Is there, um, an option to? Create a similar motion? And we vote?
Do what?
So with the AC included. The, um, positioning of the inclusionary housing to what we agreed upon.
What I just did, what my previous process again?
Yeah.
Just revoked it again?
Yeah.
What you had said?
We're just, we're just telling Jim to write a favorable decision, too, that's something else to keep in mind.
Right.
We're not.
Right.
Just a decision, we can look at it, read it. So I'll, I'll remove to, uh, remove my motion made previously.
To have those three units moved to the outside, along with the inclusion of air conditioning for all eleven units.
For the affordable.
Affordable units.
Can we, excuse me, I have to clarify that, I want to be consistent, we need to call the inclusionary.
Okay.
All right. Call up the vote, we got a second.
Oh, you're already seconded.
Oh, okay.
I need a second.
I'll second that.
You. I just seconded his motion. Dennis I, Brian.
Go on.
Go on.
Yeah, go on.
There you go.
Okay.
So also, so we will have a draft decision with you at our next meeting, if that works.
Um, that sounds good.
Thank you.
Do, do you need a before here?
So if you guys already have the seven meetings for us, we really don't. We're okay, because the other ones will be closing more like in November and December. Yeah, actually, most of them is gonna be closed, we just got filed filing.
And what I will try to do, give a rather robust agenda.
We also have Jesse on, and I don't know if he wanted to comment or say anything about some paper before.
Jesse, do you have any comments?
No, not in regards to this matter.
Anybody else on Zoom?
I will try to put your first on the agenda.
Okay.
On the next week.
I appreciate it.
So we'll keep the hearing open until we have the decision at the next meeting, everybody, and then we'll vote and close the hearings, okay?
Thank you.
So, motion to continue it till November ninth?
Um, what, what's the, what's the deadline?
Thank you, we're, we're fine.
Okay, let's go November ninth.
Yeah. Motion? Okay.
Setting?
Second.
Okay.
Um, favorably set by my sitting on.
Dennis I.
Brian.
Bill I.
Bill I.
Nick I.
Me too, although it's just, I wanna think that because.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good job.
Next item on the agenda is an inscription on one eighty-sixteenth St. The former Regal Solar Farm.
Jesse, Kelly is here.
Kelly, how are you? Thank you for, um, waiting. Hey, you may not tell us why we're here this evening.
Um, it's like you said, I know Kelly's here.
Yeah, she may have.
I'm here.
Okay.
Hey there.
Great, okay, um, so, um. Basically, um, the board, you wanted to look at the decision and just, we were out on site, and, um, you were made aware just that the fence was. Repaired, and that the property we saw on Saturday when we weren't there, that everything was maintained, but there was questions about the gate that was. Referenced within the decision, and, um, I was asked to put this on the agenda to take a look at the condition which references the gate.
It was an addition we worked up with previous owner, that the board worked diligently on. To acquire a, a gate on that property, to limit access beyond Solar Farm. And to give limited access to Maple Gate to, um. Giving the ability to get through the maintenance building.
It's number six, it's actually under number six, and number seven.
So, um, we went to revisit that thirteen.
And thirteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, one thirteen.
It simply indicates, uh, in case you don't have it, Kelly, the entry, entry gate shall be opaque. At a minimum of eight feet in height, and constructed the same material as the toll fence along Maple Street. So the gate provides a visual barrier, and let me see impacted the project from public way. The, uh, entry gates will be closed at all times when not being used for entry to the premises. So that is why we're back here this evening, for some reason it fell through the cracks, and I know we discussed it briefly. At our last visit, with, um, one of your representatives, who was, I believe, from the National Office.
That's correct. Yeah, we were only not at the site last month anyway.
Yeah, so just to pick up on what you said, Bill, we, I recall spending many a long night. Um, with this project and talking about that gate specifically, and the different options and the different reasons why we wanted it, and. Important enough to have its own paragraph, probably part of the plan with design and. The function and who's gonna have a key and who's not, and why it's needed and all that stuff, so. At the risk of not regurgitating all that, um, I was surprised to see that that gate that we spent so much time talking about. Turned into a chain, um, that doesn't really serve the purpose that the board intended. I understand there was conversations with the building inspector, um. With regard to screening internally into the site, but it doesn't achieve the same result. It, uh, the fencing that is currently there has fallen down a number of times, and you can see right through it. Um, and the, the site itself hasn't been maintained, again, I know that because you can see right through it. Because the screening of the gate that we had asked and incorporated into our decision wasn't installed. So I think this is an easy fix, if, uh, we can just have the gate that was intended to be constructed there. I think it would go a long way to the aesthetics and security of the site. And to, just to make that neighborhood a little bit more, uh. Less seeing just a bunch of fences in this, uh, chain across the entryway. Which I would think you would want, because there is no barrier to anyone. Going into that site, there's, you can just walk around it, you can drive a motorcycle around it, you can still take the chain off. You really wanted to, um, so I think, I think it's a win-win, I don't know why it wasn't included.
I, from what I understand, there were conversations, uh, back during the construction and development phase, um. Because we share that road with the golf club maintenance facility. Um, and that's why each side of the solar farm has its own fence and own gate to access the solar farm. Um, we are trying to find any email exchanges or documentation around why the change was made. To eliminate the gate and put the green plants in the fencing. I know when we were at the site, we briefly discussed. I know when we were at the site, we briefly discussed the gate. And it seemed that everybody was in agreement that the gate wasn't necessary because of the green slat. Um, but I wasn't. The, the construction happened. Um, but I'm, I'm in operation phase, I'm not in the construction phase, so we're trying to find the documentation around the change that was made there. I don't know if anybody. Go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we, we talked at length about the need for. Where the op, for, that the golf course needed access through that and they would have to. Get out and unlock it and open it and close it and keep it closed and we talked about that at length. Um, so we, we, we considered that as part of our decision. And now. As sort of a postscript. This golf course is, the owners tell us that it's never gonna be a golf course again. So that. That need for this chain across the way is, is assumed going away. But I, I just think that if we have the fence. Problem solved.
Again.
The gate, I'm sorry.
Yeah, with the change of use for sure.
Yeah, I think there were two different issues, the green fencing and the gate. I mean, there was two different issues there, green fencing and gate. The gate was important. Um, I won't say the green fence was, but that's already up.
Yeah, what happened?
I don't know what happened to the.
When, when, when did he?
Ran out of colors?
It was white.
It was.
That's supposed to be green. And they asked us that we wanted to repaint it. And we said no. Cause it was already up. If you repainted it, it wouldn't look right. And then I suspect as time goes on. And I discussed we had a month ago. This is, there's a wind tunnel. Actually, from sort of both directions. Coming out of the golf course, coming out Maple Street. And vinyl fence takes a lot of the weight. And they did mention that they're not in favor down the road. Of repairing the fence. They would just soon replace the fence. With a wooden fence, it's more durable. It will last longer.
Well, let's keep in mind, if that were to happen, they would have to come to us for a change of that decision that you guys had rendered and. You know, they, they're very amenable to talking about what, what is needed and I think, you know, they were, they're. They were very amenable to working with us, but we're at a, a point right now where. This condition in regards to the gate has been brought up just because of circumstances on, on the site. The golf course site, and I think that's what's in front of us now, is, is. Is getting that gate up for. For the reason they're here, and it's in the decision.
This is Jesse White, I'm the maintenance manager for that facility. Um, I guess one question I have is. Our site is secure, our sites both have gates with chains and locks on them, so the notion that. There's a lack of security by that uh, vinyl gate not being there on the golf courses, um, service road. Isn't exactly accurate. And I don't know how. A change in. In the golf course. Would directly impact or cause, excuse me, a need for um, that project to pay. For a fence when we already have green slats.
We're, we're not, we're not, we're talking about putting the gate up that should have been on the project to start with. That, that's the key is that we.
Right, but that was, it was swapped.
So there's a condition, condition number thirteen that says there's gonna be a gate there. And that gate isn't up there right now, and we'd like to have the applicant, which is you guys.
Or the owner.
The owner. Who's in front of us. To put the gate up. That's what we're asking. And i- if there's, you know, it doesn't sound like your research has come up with anything different. It's in the decision that's in the registry of deeds. I, I, I'm wondering why you, why, why aren't we putting the gate up?
Yeah, and I think we're going back to the green slat there. Um, the green slats wouldn't have been necessary if the opaque gate was put up, right, because. You wouldn't need to screen the solar array. You wouldn't be able to see it if the opaque gate, so there was some. Conversation or communication exchange back probably in the construction phase where they said we're gonna forego the gate because. Of probably the golf course access, maintenance facility access and green slat should suffice. To obscure the array from the road. Um, so that's what we're trying to find is those conversations or those email exchanges. Um.
Okay, so.
Obviously, you wouldn't, you wouldn't need one without the other, right, so the green slats were put there for a reason and it was. Likely because they said no gate, so we're just trying to. Get to where that, that change was made and why it was made. Um, and then of course now the, the golf course sale has triggered this revisiting of installing the gate. So.
And I meant, we, we were walking down, we were literally doing a sidewalk on another site and s- and parked on that spot last week, so that, you know. Um, but there were two different conversations and two different discussions in the meeting. And the green. The green side was one discussion, there was multiple colors, it was sitting in. Jim's office is now Amy's, that was a whole nother discussion. It get, went up as white. That was another, you know, that was another discussion, but the gate is specifically called out in. The decision and specifically was a concern and as, as our vice chairman has said, we spent many nights on it and I voted on it, so. I'd like to see the gate put in.
There's board that not waived that. This is the.
The construct, the conversation you have during the billing phase, who did you have that conversation with, billing inspector?
No, that's what we're trying to, that's what we're trying to determine, I, I, I'm.
I don't believe.
Operations side of the business. I'm on the operations side of the business, so we're working with the construct, construction team to find those emails, those conversations to why that change was made. To the site. Um.
Yeah, can I ask a question?
Sure.
When you per, maybe to eliminate some confusion. When you purchased this. Facility. Was it already constructed?
No. No, we built, we constructed it, we could, we build, oh, we build on and operate the site.
Okay, these, these, these.
We.
Conditions.
We bought it from Borrego, we bought it from Borrego, sorry to interrupt you.
Okay, these conditions. Were meant for Borrego and future owners.
Right. Yeah, and we're, we're aware of the use permit, because we referenced it prior to our, our site visit last month and we, and we actually. We talked about the gate while we were at the site with you guys. Last month, so. Yeah, we're fully aware of the gate, we're just trying to figure out why the change was made and trying to find the communication. Between our construction team and the town. Um, that supported that change in design. During the construction phase, that's all.
I think though Kelly, we're at the point where. If there's any field change. It's up to the board to have this come in front of them so that they would authorize that change, because it's within the decision that was recorded and so, you know.
Okay.
It's, it's the decision that we all have to operate under and if changes were made even in an email, it's this decision that the board had signed that they wanted these things on site.
Okay, I was working under a premise and I'm glad you corrected me. That um. The putting up of the white fence. Might have been done by Borrego. Um, so actually, when the white fence went up. It was an outlier of our conditions, because we had asked for green. And uh, we did have a discussion. About repainting and we said, no, it's already up. Let's leave it white, you know, to be. To work well with, you know, what turned out to be the new owners. However, I don't think there's a lot of flexibility. From at least one member of the sport. On moving forward without the gate.
Do you recall when those conversations were had around the color of the fence, that might help us narrow down. The search around the whole. Gate issue.
Oh, I certainly remember the conversation we had retroactively about it in the field a month and a half ago. Um, obviously, it was definitely something that was decided and somehow the white fence went up and then the board said, okay, well, it's white, if we paint it green, it's gonna peel. And that's been very problematic and ugly, so let's leave it white. I think the green slats that we're talking about that we, we assume. Or in lieu of the opaque fence or in opaque gate. Um, it was more the question that I had was saying, hey, if. There was a ruling at some time or a decision that was made. To allow or to require the green slats in lieu. Of the opaque gate. Where was that ruling? I think the town of Belingham is saying there was no such ruling. So it's now on us to find out where that decision was made by the construction team to change out the gate. Slats. Is, is that accurate?
No, when the gate was, when the gate was. Why you didn't build the gate? That, that's the whole reason. Why?
That's what we're trying, that's why we're trying to find out, that's what we're trying to understand.
I would re, I would rephrase that question.
Yeah, we, we want to understand that too, right, because, you know, there's, there's development and there's, you know. And there's engineering and there's construction and the construction hires. A company to build it and that company is Borrego, right? And then we assume responsibility for operations and maintenance of the plant. So now we want to understand as the O and M team. Um. Where the decision was made by construction to re, to not install a gate. It makes sense to not have it there as far as the access to the golf course. There's hundreds of vehicles. I've been there working all day inside the site and see hundreds of vehicles in and out of the golf course every day. And I, you know, we have one vehicle accessing. So it does make sense why. They wouldn't want to have a gate there, because that's a lot of repetitions to open and close that gate. Um. I guess. Question.
We're just trying to get to the genesis of why the change was made, because we, we wouldn't just arbitrarily not put the gate in. It was based on some. Decision or something, and that's just what we're trying to get to.
Whatever that basis was. And decisions made in the field. By you people. Borrego, whoever was there. It was never brought before this board after this. And that's exactly what you need to do, you're gonna make a change in the decision. We need to look at it and vote on it. That was never done. You can't just make decisions in the field. With your team and say. I don't know who did it, but we did it, but it was agreed upon. By who?
Well, that's what we're trying to understand, we wouldn't, like I said, we wouldn't just arbitrarily make the change without getting the appropriate permission, so that's what we're trying to understand how it happened. And that's why we were asking. Um, if you guys have recalled, that it ever came before. Because it was, it was before my time, so we're just trying to get to the genesis of why the change was made and you guys are saying that. Apparently it wasn't brought before you, which is helpful to us. And we'll go, we'll take this back and we'll see what we can find on our end.
It, it, Kelly, just, just. If we didn't spend so much time on the silly gate. And talked about the need and to talk about the impact of the golf course and spend. We just spent a lot of time on that and it was something that we. We don't usually call out these kinds of small details. In decisions, but we felt it was important enough to do that. So. And, and I know you weren't there, but how long you need? If you, to do your due diligence and come back, or you can just say, you know what, we'll just put the gate in. So that's up to you, how long would you need before you can render that decision and, or find out if you have that?
Jesse, what do you think's reasonable?
Oh, I mean, it sounds, it's pretty certain, right, we, we're saying, we're looking for this document and we're sitting here with members who voted on it and all the members are saying, we didn't vote on this, which means.
Right.
The town.
Hold on for one moment, Nick.
Can you give us two weeks? Because we're gonna have, we're gonna, yeah, just give us two weeks.
In general, the board. Built these conditions into the decision for a reason. Even if. Moving the gate was the greatest idea ever on your end, it was not done properly. The gate is a condition in the decision, the gate needs to come back. If you think that in the future the gate needs to be removed, you can come back in front of the board. And have that discussion, but I don't think the board.
To be clear, we did not.
I think.
We did remove a gate.
Back.
We never removed a gate.
Well.
During construction, the gate was never installed and in lieu of a gate, there was green slat put in to create privacy so that you couldn't see. The solar array. As you drove by. So we never removed a gate, no one removed a gate. It was simply never installed. And based on what I see there, not even designed. Um. There's underground pipes, there's underground medium voltage. Uh, twenty-five KV lines there. Um, there's gonna be a lot of engineering that's to go into. Um, how this is installed. To make it done easier safely.
Yeah, and so just again, but this isn't malicious, this, this isn't something we just arbitrarily decided not to do, so we're just trying to get to the genesis of it. And we, you know, we've been working with you guys. In good faith, so.
Hey, we appreciate that and, and. Just, you know. It's, it's, it's important to us that we get this done right. Um, so do you?
When, I, I heard her, can, can I confirm something, you said you. You would be able to dig that information out within one week?
No, I just wanted two weeks to dig in and see what we can find, I, the developer on this project is no longer with the company, so we gotta access his emails and just see if we can find anything. Um, and we'll also need to get an estimate um, around the installation of the gate, et cetera, so. Just a little more time for us to do some research and be helpful.
So we found it on the plan where the fences. Actually called out in the, in the plan, it's uh, C six point oh. And it's in box nine, and that's vehicle gate. That's where it's called out in the plan. So next meeting, is that when you can come back?
When is your next meeting?
Um.
Second Tuesday.
You can look on the website.
It's November ninth is our next meeting, let's figure out what, what, what do we expect between now and November ninth, just so, I don't want, I want Kelly to just, like, know where, I just don't wanna. Have Kelly not know what to do, what you want, or, so let's figure out what we want between now and November ninth.
We, we would like to entertain a motion. To construct the gate.
So a motion to construct the gate.
As described on the list.
And, and, and the conditions. Most documents presented, you know. We never voted.
I, 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 at this point, I would be willing to give the, the owner. Till next meeting to come up with a document that says that she's lawfully okay to waive this. Decision. But this decision, that's what it comes down to, is you have lawful. Authority to waive that decision, whether you're the current owner. You assume this when you bought the property. And that's what we're after, so I, and quite frankly, I think that gate is still necessary. Um, and that's, so what you're arguing about is coming back in front of us to actually petition us. To waive the gate. Anyway, I, I make a motion to, what's the next meeting?
November ninth.
What do we have so far? We're rather robust.
It, oh, it is, it's, we've got, yeah, it is.
We have, um.
Parcel one.
North Street. Parcel one. It's gonna be along.
Street is December fourth.
But they're in the fault of this. Yeah, as long as they get documentation to show us. I want to know who granted this authorization.
If they're willing to do it, is that, do they need to come back?
Yeah, no.
Or do you want them to come back?
And they were.
It just, it, I mean, Kelly, I, what, how would, I mean, I just, I think if, if they're gonna just comply with your decision and we could give them a timeline to get it. Constructed, but if they don't want to do that, I just don't want to waste anybody's time.
No.
Yeah, I think for me, the decision to, yes, we'll do it and by this date.
Yeah, that's what.
Someone make a motion?
I don't know if you need a motion, I mean, to continue the hearing?
It's in the decision.
Okay.
It's already in bed motion and voted on.
And bring it back.
I think let's ask the applicant what their, what they would like to, or how they'd like to proceed.
Yeah.
With the decision that we have in here.
Yes, you can send you something in writing and then you can present it for the board the ninth. Instead of.
But we have to keep in mind that if, if your intent is to get that gate up. ASAP, the ground is gonna be freezing in the next, so. You need to provide direction for the applicant for a good.
I, I need the applicant.
At the meeting, because it's, for example, if they're gonna say. It's gonna be three years before the gate goes up, that's not acceptable.
ASAP.
If it, if it's within, you know, reasonable short period of time for construction. Um, that's one thing, like this, this is already, this should be a done deal and we're just picking out the fact that it was never.
Well, the concrete put the poles and let the concrete hide and put the gate up, it's definitely a day and a half job, yeah.
Yeah.
That's. That, Kelly, I, I think, um. If you're judging from the board. We, I. The board is in favor. Of sticking with our decision. And conditions.
Yeah, that's not changed.
Yeah, I don't think that it's changed, you know.
No matter what discussion they've had.
Now, this will be continued. But then actually.
But how they.
Yeah, this should be done by our next meeting, it's your.
A deci- a decision.
You want the gate in by the next meeting?
Yeah, I don't think it's feasible to have the gate installed by the next meeting.
Yeah.
No. How much time do you need to install?
Yeah, we'll give us a timeframe.
Well, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to have to get out, get some bids out and figure out who's available to install the gate. Um, so we can, we can provide some feedback on that by the next meeting. If that's helpful.
That's fair.
That's better.
To construct a gate, that's fair.
Yep.
So let's, can we get them on the agenda?
Sure, yep, November nine, November nine.
Will we continue this until November nine?
We don't even need a motion because it wasn't the hearing, so if we'll say November ninth, they're here.
November ninth.
Okay.
Yeah, very much.
Yeah, we appreciate your your assistance.
Kelly, thank you. Jesse, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, moving on, one eighty-seven function. Has requested an extension of a permanent grant.
Yep.
This is bulk storage. Uh, we recommend an extension of two gears. With a one-year project report at a public meeting of the plan.
Good evening.
Sure, the floor is yours.
Uh, Bill Halsey of Land Planning, representing Matt Castellino tonight. Matt had planned to be here, but he had called away the family crisis and flew out like two days ago.
Okay.
So I want him to be here for that, but he can't be. So the site has been progressing in construction over the past, you know, two years. He'll be retaining all bills. Uh, he's bringing material processing up. But he needs a lot of fill on the site. Uh, he did actually put up a burn across the front to screen from the neighbors and he's put some plantings out there. He's uh put in um some sprinklers. You know, but he does control the materials on site. He also has a water truck on site to keep us out. But due to high cost materials and COVID and the challenges of the past few years, construction has not gone at the pace that we all anticipate. Matt wants to get this done, you know, he's been on this for a while. So he'd like an extension of two years if possible on the permits that were granted for the site, so he has time to finish it up. Currently, he's working at his place in Medway, but he claims to have this as his name and operation.
And then it'd be an emotion.
Yeah, just one thing before before motion.
Yeah.
Um, I just first wanted to thank Bill and Matt for coming in.
Thank you.
Because it was just brought brought to our attention that the permit had expired, so I just want to thank them for coming in and dealing with this with just. To addressing it. I think that's really important. Um, so. I think just something the board needs to think about is if you could, you know, obviously maybe review it in a year. Give a year or you give maybe the two years and then review it after a year so we know that there's progress being made. On the other thing, Bill, and and it's totally not under our jurisdiction, but. Um, I know the conservation was involved in those order conditions, I believe, had expired, so I just kind of. Not our, not our jurisdiction, but I know that we ran parallel with that. So is that something you're also. Going to be doing with the conservation commission? Just, I don't, you know, it's their thing, but I know they did have to deal with the conservation.
Yeah, we have this special conservation as well. We're advised to start with planning. And uh if we get an extension here, we'll go to conservation and get an extension there. We may have to file a new notice of intent. I'm not sure. We haven't had that discussed yet.
For those of us who weren't on the board at the time, I don't believe I was, um, can you go over real quickly what the, what the project was just? Three or three or four sentences. Or, no, not, yeah, not going too deep, but just.
Yeah, uh, site on Farm Street right across from, I believe asphalt engineering was, I mean, a fully constructed, this, alright. Uh, it was a field, the team's owned it, uh, the office is, yes. And uh way back probably, I think it was like two thousand eighteen, we had our development plan approved. For Matt Castellino, he does the landscaping, took up the office and garage and have storage and materials out back. Um.
Bulk storage, correct?
Bulk storage. So we had a spill a lot of management, development plan, plan, bulk storage and scenic groves is on street. Um. I think it was approved pretty much everything planning was looking for, including the twenty-foot pole for our bulk storage height. And that's pretty amenable to, you know, doing what it needs to do to be a good citizen.
You have a storage permit at this point? You know, that would have to, we have only a certain amount in town?
There is.
You were one of the ones that.
Yeah.
That got in there.
Yes, it was approved in eighteen, yeah.
Okay. Right, that's another question I had.
Anyway, I recall it went fairly smooth.
Yes, it did.
It was fully vetted, uh, peer reviews. We, you know, the pole, you know.
The mul- mulch height.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, we, we wanted.
We use that sense, I think.
The pass. That's how you put the twenty-foot pole.
The pole, I think we've seen that pole on other projects.
Yeah, we used it before, but I haven't seen it.
Matt will put it in.
So perhaps what we could do is entertain a motion. Would you um review it on the um. December meeting, first meeting in December, the twenty-fourth. You get your status. And uh completion by on the first meeting December. That gives you a little bit more than the, um. I think that I I'm going to entertain that motion now.
Yeah, I'll second that motion, but.
I can't make a motion.
All right, so I'll move it with the. Sort of the condition that the properties continue to be secured and maintained, you know, dust or whatever and. Is there any contemplation that the, it's going to still be utilized for any purpose or is it just going to sit still?
Um, he he apparently works out there. He has machines and usable material. It's not just sitting. There was, there was partners.
I'm advised that we probably, you know, we're actually.
Yeah, but is he operating his business from there?
No, he's operating on a medway.
All right, but so they won't, it won't be like, it won't. The 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 construction will stop and then some other use is going to happen there or he's.
Well, maybe a good use.
It was approved to be for bulk storage in a building.
It's the building.
So anywhere in operation.
To sell the product and stuff and move the material, that's all.
Okay, uh, I guess, I guess.
We had done two phases, one was site work and second phase was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so I uh assume.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Let me call for the vote.
Dennis, Brian, I.
Bill on.
Bill on.
Do you know where he's going to start that building, do you think?
That I don't know. But yes, the site work on, the infrastructure has to be in for us to make the work happen.
So maybe we can look at at some point like a, a schedule of like a timeline, I think would be really helpful. Just because we are granting that extension that I think, yeah, I've written timeline of the steps so that. We know that there's progress to meet that decision that.
You'd be like target, targets and objectives.
Yeah, fair enough, yes.
Yeah, we'll put along to Matt and certainly his, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Guys, I have to hopefully everything's okay.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you, sir.
I didn't get details.
So.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks a lot.
Good night.
Good night, man. Thank you.
Um, the next one is lot one R, Prospect Street. Um, the A and R. I had proper access from a paid public plan. And I'm not trying, however, the plan indicates is an undersized lot. Can extract it in general view. We recommend that I note in the rare portion of this proposed lot, but underneath the signature line. Stating lot one R does not meet the zoning requirements of the town of Bellingham in Catholics. We've done this on other A and R lots if the applicant has proposed along Prospect. In essence, what he's doing, he's shaving off pieces of property from lots in Bellingham, transferring it to a lot. On Prospect Street, Prospect Street in front. The buildable lot and selling the other buildings.
And what Jim wanted clarification on this plan, which Mr. Petrosi would not really withdrew, but he did take these back and what's on the plans that you have to sign here is that it's. Not a buildable lot. So that language is. Not that one, it's the new one required to come in.
Title transfer of property?
I don't know that, but I know that we wanted the language on our parcel that it's not buildable.
So that lot does not become built by hand. Because she shaved off.
Yes. And that's on the one that you guys will, if you choose to. Well, that was a good catch by Jim. And you did that the same with the other A and R on Prospect when that came? We could have the same language.
Is it stating that buildable or it does not comply with Bellingham's, um, that's the bill of it right on?
It's, it's, it should not be construed to be a determination of conformance with zoning regulations.
Okay, that's. They covered, they covered, okay.
It's not the language Jim wanted, is it closer to?
No, it's, it, if this is, yeah, because it's, it's, it says it's. It's not in conformance, so it's not.
And not.
With our, with our.
Buildable lot.
Yeah, so that now makes the not defaulting.
Right.
Correct. Uh, so. Second.
Any discussion?
Dennis, I, Brian, I.
Bill on.
Bill on.
Nick on.
Also passing a news.
There is an additional note too that says here it does not meet, so it's referenced in two places.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So here's the language that Jim wanted as well.
Thanks, Jim, wherever you are.
He's on his yacht.
Yeah, Amy, can we have, um. Did you do a minute or something? What?
The minute, what's that?
Um, we got the minutes from the prior meeting, but we didn't get the last month.
We do not have those because that was a five-hour meeting and so that is still working on those, so I think we're going to give her a little.
Yeah, right, I agree.
That was a lot.
And it was given, we needed to type in that. Second.
Multiple floor approved, we are.
Dennis, I.
The minutes from our set in the last meeting, are there any others that we need to vote on?
Dennis, I, Brian, I.
Bill on.
Bill on.
Yeah, God.
That motion passing, man, listen. Entertain a motion to return.
The who?
Second. Night, Jim, wherever you are.